Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Christopher Iannella Chamber. My name is Matt O'Malley. I am the City Council President pro tempore. Today is May 19, 2021, and in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 Executive Order modifying certain requirements of the open meeting law, this Boston City Council meeting is being conducted hybridly. Most councilors are here in the chamber, but several will be joining us via Zoom as well. Any viewer or any resident can watch the council meeting live on YouTube by visiting We are also streaming on all cable providers. Madam Clerk, to begin this meeting, would you please call a roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Arroyo.
Present.
Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Bach.
Present.
Counselor Braden.
Present.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Edwards.
Present.
Counselor Sabi George.
Present.
Counselor Flaherty.
Aye.
Counselor Flynn.
Aye.
Counselor Mejia.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Present.
And Counselor Wu. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We are delighted to have Reverend Catherine Miller from Hill Memorial Baptist Church to deliver our invocation this afternoon. Reverend Miller is a guest of Counselor Braden, and Counselor Braden, I'd like to invite you to introduce our esteemed member of the clergy. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, it is my honor to introduce Reverend Catherine Miller. She became a settled pastor of the Hill Memorial Baptist Church in Alston on Harvard Ave in the spring of 2019. She is a bivocational pastor, working also in the legal field. And Catherine received her Master's of Divinity degree from Gordon Conwell Theological Seminary in 2017 and graduated with honors. She and her husband Shelton have an extensive ministerial background and eager hearts for all the work, for the work of serving diverse people across socioeconomic spectrum, including those sheltered, incarcerated, and in our senior community. In the context of COVID, I haven't had the opportunity to interact very much with Reverend Catherine in person, but she is a very active member of the, very involved with the community in North Austin, especially around the historic Hill Memorial Baptist Church. So with no more ado, I want to welcome Reverend Catherine to our meeting today and to thank you for joining us, Reverend Catherine.
Thank you for having me. Please pray with me. Almighty God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for always being ready to receive our prayers, always being eager to bless. I come before you with the city councilors, the Brighton-Austin community friends, officials, their teams in various departments, for this session of their financial budgeting meeting. Grant us all your peace. I ask for your peace upon every heart and mind relating to any personal worries or challenges. God, I ask specifically for your wisdom to just be present with all who are participating in this Boston City Council meeting, in this session and sessions ahead, for all who will present, will speak, will give testimony. I ask for clear thoughts and speech. For those who will be listening, I ask for purposeful listening and careful consideration. Grant continued wisdom and cooperation, respect, and integrity as the community and their appointed officials work to allocate finances and budgeting for repairs and upgrades, any new projects and any other budget-related matters. We are thankful for all the city councilors, the residents, and friends attending today and continue to be with them throughout this time. May your resourcefulness and creativity flow and help, and they may all leave these meetings satisfied, a good degree of satisfaction that, that things continue to go forward in the right direction for the well-being of all in the respective communities. Thank you, God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend, for that inspiring message. I'd now invite everyone who is able to please stand as Counselor Braden leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Reverend Miller, and thank you, Counselor Braden, for inviting Reverend Miller to open up our meeting today. There are no presentations, so we are now moving on to the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, seeing and hearing no discussion on whether we should approve these minutes. The chair moves to approve them as presented. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Approval of the minutes. Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Oh, Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes, and Counselor Wu. Mr. President, the minutes have been approved unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Madam Clerk, would you please amend the attendance report to indicate that Counselor Campbell has joined us?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Moving right along to communications from her Honor, the Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please read Dockets 0668 as well as 0669 together?
Thank you. Docket 0668, message in order for the approval authorizing the City of Boston to submit to Massachusetts School Building Authority, known as MSBA, statements of interest for their accelerated repairs program for the following schools: the William E. Russell in Dorchester, the Henderson Upper in the Wilson Building, the Rafael Hernandez School in Jamaica Plain, and the Boston Day and Evening Academy in the Wheatley Building in Roxbury. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies in the priority category for which the City of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. And docket number 0669, message in order for your approval authorizing the City of Boston to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, MSBA, statements of interest for the Horace Mann School for the Deaf and Hard of Hearing located at 40 Armington Street, Boston, Mass. The statement of interest describes and explains the deficiencies and the priority categories for which the City of Boston may be invited to apply to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, docket 0668 as well as 0669 shall be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0670?
Thank you. Docket 0670, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $5,000 in the form of a grant for the FY18 jail/arrest diversion program awarded by the Mass Department of Mental Health to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund startup costs, program supplies, and planning meetings to establish the crisis intervention team, training, and technical assistance center through the Boston Police Academy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Andrea Campbell, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Chair Campbell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I'm seeking suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0670. It's a relatively small amount, $5,000, coming from the State's Department of Mental Health to the police department. And the funds are to support the startup cost of this crisis intervention team and technical assistance center through the police academy, which is critically important. And because it's a relatively small amount, for purposes they have defined, would seek suspension of the rules and passage of this docket. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Counselor Campbell, as Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0670. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Docket 0670, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Can you hear me? Yes? Okay.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Edwards. Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Aye.
Counselor O'Malley, aye, and Counselor Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0670 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to reports of public officers and others, would you please read docket 0671 through 0673 together?
Thank you. Docket 0671, communication from Counselor Wu regarding her absence from this week's council meeting. Docket, bless you.
Bless you.
Docket 0672, notice as you see from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 28, 2021. And docket number 0673, notice as you see from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of May 5, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 0671 through 0673 shall be placed on file. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0204?
Docket 0204, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on January 27, 2021. Docket number 0204, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Elisa Drayton to the Board of Directors to the Boston Industrial Development Finance Authority for term expiring April 1, 2025. submits a report recommending the order ought to be confirmed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair, of course, of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation is Counselor Wu, who is not with us, so the Vice Chair, Counselor Baker, has asked Counselor Mejia to speak on docket 0204. Counselor Mejia, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy to be speaking on behalf of Counselor Wu, who shared a great hearing last Friday, May 14, on the appointment of Elisa Drayton to the Board of Directors of the BIDFA. We were joined by Counselors Braden, Flynn, Bach, and myself, as well as Elisa Drayton, who spoke about her experience and vision, if confirmed, to be on the Board of Directors. Her expertise spans over 20 years and includes professional experience at State Street Corporation, where she served as an Assistant Vice President, as well as serving as an independent consultant for businesses across the city. During the hearing, I asked about how she sees her role to expand community engagement in this space. She emphasized the importance of community meetings and having staff on hand who directly work with the community. Overall, Elisa was able to effectively respond to all of the questions asked by the councilors. Given her expertise and upon the recommendation of the Chair, we are seeking confirmation of this appointee.
Thank you very much, Counselor Mejia. Seeing no further discussion on docket 0204, Counselor Baker, as Vice Chair of the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, seeks passage and confirmation of docket 0204. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0204, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes, and Counselor Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0204 has been confirmed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, as I think I neglected to note that we're currently in the Reports of Committees section of our council meeting, so moving right along to docket 0347, would you please read it and place it before this body?
Hopefully people can hear me. Docket 0347, the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, to which is referred on February 24, 2021. Docket number 0347, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend an amount of $360,000 in the form of a grant awarded by the Boston Regional Development Authority doing business as the Boston Planning and Development Agency, BPDA, pursuant to a board vote to approve the expenditure on February 11, 2021. submits a report recommending the order ought to pass.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Again, Chair Wu in absentia and Vice Chair Baker have asked Counselor Liz Braden to speak on behalf of docket 0347. Counselor Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation held a public hearing on May 14 on docket number 0347, a grant in the amount of $360,000 awarded by the Boston Planning and Development Agency. The grant will fund staff positioned for the Boston Transportation Department for three years under a memorandum of agreement to assist in implementing, in the implementation of transportation and infrastructure improvements associated with BPDA and Transportation Department planning initiatives in the city's neighborhoods. Present were Counselor Wu, Chair of the Committee, Counselors Mejia, Flynn, Bach, and myself. Administration officials presented, present were Vinet Gupta, Director of Planning, Policy Planning for the BTD, and Patrick Hoy, Senior Transportation Planner for BTD, who made a presentation on the particulars of this grant and responded to questions from the Chair and from councilors. On behalf of Counselor Wu, Chair of the Planning and Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, I respectfully recommend that this docket ought to pass. On a matter of personal privilege, I'd also like to add my personal support for passage of this docket. The BTD staff position to be funded would make, have a significant focus on the time for implementing recommendations for the Austin-Bright Mobility Plan and also some other mobility initiatives across the city, so a timely passage would be very appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, on behalf of Counselors Wu and Baker, seek passage of docket 0347. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0347, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Aye.
Counselor Bach, aye. Counselor Braden.
Aye.
Counselor Braden, aye. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes, and Counselor Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0347 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving right along to matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk, could I please call dockets 0532 through 0534 out of order? Seeing no objection, Madam Clerk, would you please read dockets 0524 through 0534 together?
Thank you. And as a technical note, under docket 0527, orders for capital fund transfer appropriations, there's a typo, and it should be docket 0528. So if I may.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Docket 0524, order for the FY22 operating budget, including annual appropriation for departmental operations to the school department and other post-employment benefits known as OKEB. Docket 0527 through 0528, order for capital fund transfer appropriations. Docket 0529, orders for the capital budget, including loan orders and lease purchase agreements. Docket 0532, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2022 to support the maintenance repair for BPS facilities, including custodial and utility costs for extended building time, floor refinishing, landscaping, and building repairs. Receipts from lease, permit for use, and parking fees for BPS facilities will be deposited in this fund. BPS will be the only unit authorized to expend from this fund, and such expenditures shall not exceed $2,200,000. Docket 0533, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2022 to repair and purchase Boston Public Schools computer technology, including computers, mobile devices, and instructional software. This revolving fund shall be credited with any and all receipts from equipment sales and repair fees for Boston Public Schools technology. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $2 million. And docket number 0534, message in order authorizing a limit for the Boston Public Schools Revolving Fund for fiscal year 2022 for Boston Public Schools transportation costs, including bus and public transportation costs. This revolving fund shall be credited with revenue received by Boston Public Schools Public School Department for the provision of transportation to groups and entities for field trips and activity other than transportation to and from school. Receipts and resulting expenditures from this fund shall not exceed $100,000.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The chair now recognizes Counselor Kenzie Bach, Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means. Chair Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Last week on Thursday, we had the VCYF budget hearing. It was great to have the team presenting about their programming and hopes for kind of supporting our young people as they get back into the centers this year and lots of good capital projects. On Monday, we had a hearing with the departments that received funds from last year's budget resubmission reallocation, so that's HSTRONG, Office of Food Access, Human Rights Commission, Language and Communications Access, and the Office of Immigrant Advancement. As I said in the hearing, these are small but mighty departments that punch above their weight, and they've done a ton to support our residents during this past year of pandemic, and will continue to be doing that into FY22, and a number are seeing significant further increases in their budget, so it was great to hear from all of them. Yesterday, we had two BPS hearings on their revolving funds and their strategic plan commitments, numbers 2, 3, and 4, which focused on academic topics, community engagement, and the Build BPS and Mass Core plans that they had announced last week. And then, and I want to, for all those hearings, thank colleagues for coming and asking great questions and being so engaged in the budget process. We still have two hearings to come tomorrow. The morning one is on Office of Economic Development and the Office of Women's Advancement, which are grouped together because there's a significant investment in a childcare entrepreneur fund this year on the women's advancement side, and then the Boston Public Library in the afternoon. So I just want to remind the public that directions on how to provide testimony through Zoom or via recorded video or by email can be found at boston.gov/budget-testify. Remind councilors that we have our final working session for the very last batch of hearings this Friday morning, so please come or send your questions. And in the meantime, Mr. President, I'd like to keep all dockets in committee.
Thank you very much. Chair Bach, docket 0524 through 0534 shall remain in the Committee on Ways and Means. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0605?
Thank you. Docket 0605, an order pursuant to general law, Chapter 43B, Section 10, to amend the charter of the City of Boston by submission of a question for approval by the voters.
Thank you very much. The chair now recognizes Counselor Lydia Edwards, Chair of the Committee on Government Operations. Chair Edwards, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited to bring back this proposal to my colleagues. Just a quick background, as we all recall, this past fall, we voted for this charter amendment and this language to go forward to the Attorney General's office. I want to thank all of my colleagues who stood there and stood up for that moment. Today, I come back to you with some slight revisions to that language. As the process goes, you normally submit the proposed language to the Attorney General's office, and then her office receives feedback from everyone around the Commonwealth about pros, cons, or suggestions. And she then responded with a report with some suggested language. I want to be clear, she did approve us going to the ballot, but we decided it made sense to take up her suggestions because they wanted to clarify certain language and also to make sure that there was no confusion or expectation or assumption that we might be brushing up against state law. The laws that we may have been brushing up against specifically dealt with special allocations. Special allocations or specific allocations from municipal budgets are controversial, as you can imagine, a city can pull aside some of their general funds and then ultimately reward it to one individual person. So our laws made very clear in a list of special allocations. Participatory budgeting is not specifically laid out in that. And so we wanted to make clear that we're not going to come up against that law. And so what we did was simply take away the specificities of a certain percentage. We took away the language that said how much of that has to go and where it needs to go, and still included the concept of participatory budgeting, the Office for Participatory Budgeting, and that we will have it. But we didn't want to allocate anything in the charter specifically because that could brush up against the state law. We also wanted to make very clear about what we meant by equal powers with the mayor, using words like "together" as opposed to "equal," so that we didn't brush up against the strong mayor system, which is also in our charter. It was actually a wonderful back and forth with the Attorney General's office, and I'm very excited to say that we will be the first city in the Commonwealth to actually take this kind of a charter amendment to the people of the city that we represent. Most of our home will petitions or changes to our charters have gone to the State House. We're breaking the mold, folks, and we're going right to the people for them to decide. Now, whether they say yes or no ultimately to this will be for them to decide and for us to make that decision. But I'm encouraging and hopeful that, again, you will vote for this to allow for the people of Boston to make that decision. At the end of the day, I think we're more democratic, and I think we're setting a different mode of talking about how we change our charter by not going to the State House but going directly to the people of Boston. And I would be honored again to have your support to do just that. So you have a copy of my committee report, but again, and in short, I am recommending that this docket ought to pass and the slight amendments, and I hope again that you will vote for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Edwards. Is there further discussion on docket 0605? To our colleagues zooming in, unfortunately, I can't see you, so if you'd like to speak up, just please let me know. Seeing no further discussion on 0605, Counselor Edwards, as Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, seeks passage of docket 0605. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0605, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counselor Baker.
Aye.
Counselor Baker, aye. Counselor Bach.
Yes.
Counselor Bach, yes. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell, yes. Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards, yes. Counselor Sabi George.
Yes.
Counselor Sabi George, yes. Counselor Flaherty.
Yes.
Counselor Flaherty, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor O'Malley.
Yes.
Counselor O'Malley, yes, and Counselor Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0605 has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Counselor Edwards. Moving along to motions, orders, and resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0674 and place it before the body?
Docket 0674, Counselor Saby George offered the following resolution, recognizing May 18th as Physicians' Mental Health Awareness Day.
Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Anissa Saby George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As May is Mental Health Awareness Month, I filed this resolution in order to recognize the work of our physicians during this pandemic and the need to support their mental health. The pandemic proved that mental health is as important as physical health, and that it is particularly true for our physicians and providers who have handled the brunt of this crisis. It certainly won't improve everyone's mental health overnight, but this resolution encourages all healthcare employers to improve access to mental health care for their physicians and to all employees. Prior to 2020, roughly 40% of physicians reported experiencing burnout, and this percentage climbed to 60% during the pandemic. I hope the physicians of Boston are able to take time to care for themselves and their families. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution as a small token of our unabiding appreciation for all that physicians have done to keep us safe and healthy.
Thank you very much, Counselor Saby George. Any further discussion on 674? Would any counselors wish to add their name? Oh, I'm sorry. For discussion on docket 674, the Chair recognizes the district counsel from Austin-Brighton, Counsel Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I please add my name to this resolution as having worked in healthcare for a large part of my career, I'm very cognizant of the stresses that our healthcare professionals are under, and especially our physicians in emergency rooms, they've had to deal with incredible stress and professional challenges in the past year in the context of our COVID epidemic. So I really applaud this resolution and hope that employers will provide adequate mental health support for all of their healthcare professionals. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Braden. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Liz Braden as a cosponsor. Also, add Counselor Frank Baker, Counselor Kenzie Bach, Counselor Lydia Edwards, Counselor Michael Flaherty, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Julia Mahia, Counselor Ricardo Arroyo. Going to go out on a limb and say Counselor Andrea Campbell. And please add the Chair's name.
Yes, I'm on.
Please add the Chair's name as well. Counselor Anissa Saby George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0674. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Docket 0674, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counselor Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Aye.
Counsel Bach, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Saby George.
Yes.
Counsel Saby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Mr. President, docket 0674 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0675 and place it before the body?
Thank you. Docket 0675, Counselor Saby George offered the following resolution, recognizing May 16th through the 22nd, 2021, as National Emergency Medical Services EMS Week.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes the at-large counsel from Dorchester, Counselor Anissa Saby George. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, again, Mr. President. May 16th through 22nd, 2021 is National Emergency Medical Services Week. Boston's EMS practitioners are always on the front line, providing critical care to Boston's residents on a regular basis. They field, on average, 125,000 911 calls annually and transport nearly 73,000 people to area hospitals. They play an important role connecting our homeless population to services as well as providing necessary immediate treatment for those suffering from an opioid overdose. During this pandemic, they were often the first medical professionals to treat those with COVID complications. Boston's EMS is filled with people who are heroes every day. I ask that we suspend the rules and pass this resolution to honor Boston's 400 EMTs and paramedics who have shown up over the past year in particular, as well as long before that, to ensure our city and its residents are healthy and safe.
Well said. Could not agree more. Thank you, Counsel Saby George. Any further discussion on docket 0675? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Bach, Counsel Braden, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn. Please add the Chair as well. Counsel Saby George seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0675. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Docket 0675, Counselor Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Aye.
Counsel Bach, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Saby George. Counsel Saby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0675 has been adopted unanimously.
Thank you. And to the maker, perhaps, when things are a little safer, we can invite some of the amazing public servants for Boston EMS, so we can properly thank them as we often do here. So thank you for introducing that. Madam Clerk, please read docket 0676.
Thank you. Docket 0676, Counsel Bach offered the following resolution, recognizing May as National Preservation Month.
Chair now recognizes the district counsel from Beacon Hill, Counsel Kenzie Bach. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. National Preservation Week was first celebrated in May 1973 in an effort to draw attention to the benefits of local, state, and national historic preservation. It was something Donald Sheehan of the National Trust proposed, and it was introduced to Congress and signed into law on May 5th, 1973. In 2005, the National Trust expanded National Preservation Week into Preservation Month in an effort to draw still more attention to our historic places and to promote heritage tourism. And so, you know, this month, I think, more than ever, that this council should recognize, protect, and celebrate not only the economic benefits of historic tourism here in Boston, but also the social and educational benefits of preserving our diverse and unique heritage. I think we really need to protect and preserve historic sites that are important to all of Boston's communities and bring greater equity to our preservation efforts. I know so many colleagues share that sentiment, and I'm very grateful to counselors for coming to our Landmark's budget hearing on May 10th and speaking loudly on the need for more resources there, and I hope we can double down on that sentiment with this resolution today. So, Mr. President, I am seeking a motion to suspend and pass.
Thank you very much, Counsel Bach. Any further discussion on docket 0676? Seeing none, would any counselors wish to add their name as a cosponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counsel Arroyo, Counsel Baker, Counsel Braden, Counsel Mahia, Counsel Campbell, Counsel Edwards, Counsel Saby George, Counsel Flaherty, Counsel Flynn. Please add the Chair's name as well. Counsel Bach, as the author of the resolution, seeks suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 0676. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
I don't know. Well, we're getting there. I'm getting there. Docket 0676, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Aye.
Counsel Bach, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Saby George.
Yes.
Counsel Saby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Aye.
Counsel O'Malley, aye. And Counsel Wu. Mr. President, docket number 0676 has been adopted unanimously. Please excuse my rush to.
Not at all, Madam Clerk. You are the best. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Congratulations, Counsel Bach. That concludes motions, orders, and resolutions. We're now coming up to the meeting where we discuss personnel orders. Madam Clerk, would you please read docket 0677?
Thank you. Docket 0677, Counsel O'Malley for Counsel Baker.
Chair seeks suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0677. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Docket 0677, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Aye.
Counsel Bach, aye. Counsel Braden.
Aye.
Counsel Braden, aye. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Saby George.
Yes.
Counsel Saby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Mr. President, docket 0677 has passed unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now moving on to late files. I'm informed by the Clerk that there is a late file matter. This late file matter is an order sponsored by Counsel Bach, and for the first time in 11 years, myself as well, my first late file order. The late file is being sent to everyone right now or being delivered by our great staff director, Lady Valdez. We're going to first take a roll call to add this item to the agenda, and then we will have discussion on this matter. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to add the late file matter to our agenda and place it before us?
Thank you. To add the late file, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards. Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Saby George.
Yes.
Counsel Saby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counsel Mahia.
Yes.
Counsel Mahia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Mr. President, the late file was promptly before the body.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you please read the first and last into the record before we begin discussion on this late file matter?
Thank you. Offered by Counselor Kenzie Bach and Matt O'Malley in the City Council, an order regarding a text amendment to the Boston zoning code with respect to parking minimums for affordable housing. Whereas the city of Boston confronts an affordable housing crisis with 49.6% of Boston-area renters renter burdened by devoting more than 30% of their income to housing costs, more than 50,000 families on the waiting list for the Boston Housing Authority Public Housing Unit, and for far too many homeless families in shelters. Whereas our first duty is to build the city for people, not for the storage of vehicles. Now therefore be it ordered that the Boston City Council, by and through Counsel Kenzie Bach and Matt O'Malley, submits a petition to amend the text of the Boston zoning code filed on May 19th, 2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The Chair now recognizes Counsel Kenzie Bach. Counsel Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I apologize to my colleagues for this being filed late. It is the first time in a year and a half that I am doing that, and as the President just said, it's the first time in 11 years he's doing that. And so we don't take it lightly, but I do think that this body exists to act and act expeditiously when a core public policy purpose is being frustrated. And I rise before you today because Boston's parking minimums are increasingly being weaponized to stall or prevent affordable housing development that our residents badly need. These objections are being raised both at the Zoning Board of Appeals and, when that fails, in courts of law, most recently in regard to proposed projects at 337 Washington Street, 3371 Washington Street, and 37 Whale Street. I really don't think that we should allow cynical ploys to extract concessions for private interests or to frustrate the critical public need for affordable housing for the sake of those private interests to continue at the expense of our most vulnerable members. And, you know, I think that sometimes everybody wants to have it all, but the reality is there are some real trade-offs. And in the world of affordable housing development, every parking space built or acquired for an entirely affordable housing development diminishes the funds available for additional affordable housing units. In a city in the midst of a housing crisis, I think that trade-off's unacceptable. And we also know from research, including reports published by, a report published by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council last year, that parking in multifamily housing in our city and around the region is going underutilized. So not only does it cost us units, but we're requiring people to build it over its utilization. The most recent instance, you're talking about 38 units of senior housing that are located immediately proximate to the T. It's, you know, this is just something, it's costly, it frustrates it, it creates a hook for people to file these lawsuits. And the reality is that in Boston, affordable housing is often built close to mass transit, and it's exactly that kind of transit-oriented development that we need in order to meet our climate goals. I mean, in addition to the affordable housing goals, we cannot meet our climate goals without moving toward more housing that's reliant on public transit, walking, and other measures. And so, you know, as the order says, I think that we need to build a city first and foremost for people. And I think if we don't want to live in a city where the only place for you to sleep is your car, we have to prioritize bedrooms over parking spaces. That's just, I think, an essential trade-off. And to allow these delays to continue through the weaponization of parking minimums, it undercuts our ability to house these residents and meet our climate goals. My office and Matt's, we've been working on more comprehensive proposal for zoning relief for 100% affordable housing. I'm grateful to many colleagues who came to the, both the hearing we had in November and the working session we had in March. A more comprehensive thing is more complicated because of the unique nature of Boston zoning code, so that's something that we're still working on. But I just think that this accelerating bad faith trend of blocking desperately needed affordable housing on the basis of parking minimums is not something we can allow to stand, and it's not something we can allow to wait on figuring out that bigger piece. And so as a first and urgent step, Counsel O'Malley and I are today proposing an elimination of parking minimums for 100% affordable housing projects, and we'll seek a speedy hearing on the matter. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. My colleagues, please indulge me as I once again bend the rules a bit and speak from the dais as a means of safety protocol, but I will be mercifully brief. I'm proud to partner with Counsel Bach on this again. It dovetails nicely in our work. There's a renewed sense of urgency, and just for some background, many of you know this, so please bear with me. Last summer, there was a remarkable project slated, all set for the green light in Jamaica Plain, right on the Washington Street corridor, in the heart of the JP Rox district, where we would be able to offer housing for 200 formerly unhoused individuals through a tremendous partnership of the community builders, TCB, and the Pine Street Inn. In my time in elective office, this was as non-controversial a project as I've ever encountered. People were excited about it, people came together to support it, and at the 11th hour, under dubious claims, and a butler who does not live in the city but owns property in the city was able to file a suit which stalled anything. And I said then, as I'm saying now, it was needlessly cruel in the midst of a pandemic. That, I thought, was one of the most outrageous things, and yet we find ourselves nine months later with a building across the street similarly embraced by the community. It's preserving two locally-owned businesses, it's creating nearly 40 units for low-income seniors. Very same developer has filed suit again. This is wrong. This is a perverse use of system. We all know that people have property rights and have the proper opportunity for litigation as they should, but when it's used in such a weaponized way to just try to stop progress and exert more influence when there has been a robust community process, is simply just denying more people places to live. So I think that this text amendment, again, this is narrowly focused on specific, affordable, deeply affordable, 100% affordable units. We will have a happy debate on this subject, but this is part and parcel what we've been working on as it relates to some zoning relief. We want to make it easier for individuals to be able to build worthwhile projects, particularly those that are so embraced by the community, as these two specific buildings have been directly across the street with one another. So I'm delighted to add, obviously, my name as co-sponsor, and looking forward to continued work again. So, thank you, Counsel Bach. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Hyde Park. Counsel Ricardo Arroyo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Bach, for your leadership on this issue. We've seen this happen in my district as well in terms of affordable housing units, having parking weaponized against their development, even though we recognize that in the city of Boston, we are in a housing crisis, and those most vulnerable are those who cannot afford market-rate housing. And so if this goes towards protecting housing that is specifically tailored for those most vulnerable in our community, and also serves as an incentive for the creation of more such housing, I think this is one of the worthiest goals that we can actually aim for. So this is a piece of legislation that I look forward to seeing carried through with the urgency of the late file, the first late file in 11 years for President O'Malley. I hope we move this with that urgency through this body. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Arroyo. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from East Boston, Counsel Lydia Edwards. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. We've all seen as district city councils and, of course, as at-large counselors, the back and forth over parking and development, you know, with developers coming into our civic associations. In my case, in East Boston, many of them saying, "Well, it's, we don't need parking, and we're not going to provide parking, actually, for some of their development." And then the back and forth with where those cars are going to go. So I just want to acknowledge that there is still a question of where we're going to put cars, that we need to have that conversation. We should be moving to a more city that, to a city that is less car-dependent. That is not a question. But we aren't there yet. And when we did have conversations about charging for parking, or when we did have conversations about limiting parking spaces, there was a reaction. So I want to be very clear, I absolutely want to prioritize housing over parking, but I'm not going to ignore the elephant in the room, that there are a lot of people in this city that are not convinced of that, and absolutely think that parking needs to still be prioritized. I may not have, I'm not going to say it. I keep looking at him and parking. I can't do that. I may not have. No, no, you'll do it for me. I'm not going to bring it up. But this conversation needs to happen, and I couldn't think of a more worthy cause to have it around, which is affordable housing. That being said, my question, or I do want to acknowledge that 100% affordable opportunities don't happen that often. What we're seeing is the mixed-use ones, right? And so I would love to know how this will fit in when we're dealing with, for example, in Charlestown, where we are dealing with the single largest housing development that will no longer be 100% affordable. We actually will have market rate mixed in with affordable units and almost tripling the size. So are we going to be dealing with the parking minimums, and how are we going to deal with that? Are the parking minimums only going to be applying to those units that are affordable, that those with money can get their parking spots? So these are the conversations that we need to be prepared for in order to push for this. I was, I felt it all the way in East Boston, Counsel O'Malley, when that person was able to block affordable housing based off of parking alone. I don't ever want that to be an opportunity, or as Counsel Bach mentioned, being weaponized against affordable housing. But parking is an issue, and we still need to have that parking hearing, I think it was, to actually do an accounting of how many spaces we have in the city of Boston, and to actually make sure that we are accounting not only for how much we have, but why are we giving them out if we don't really have the space for it? And we really need to have a coming-to-Jesus moment on it. So, just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Edwards. And just to answer your query, the way this is written, it's specifically for 100% total affordable units as it's presented before us right now. So, thank you. Chair now recognizes the at-large Counsel from South Boston, Counsel Michael Flaherty. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Five K here, ones for the woo terrain, as I mentioned last week. I couldn't agree with the previous speaker more. And what folks don't realize is when developers come forward, they don't want to do parking. In fact, they don't even give that parking away, and that's a big part of the problem. So easy for those that represents the southwest corner of the city, but East Boston, Charlestown, the North End, Chinatown, Bay Village, Shell Boston, when you go to the community meetings, they're demanding not less parking, they're demanding more parking on site because of the crunch that they're seeing in their communities. And so, and when a developer submits their initial proposal, there's very little, if any, parking at the first submission. It's the community, it's the director butters, it's the neighborhood associations that come in looking and asking for more. And as representatives in a representative government, working for the people, each project is different. So I would caution that this be, that this not be a one-size-fits-all, and that particularly as it pertains to the densely populated communities that currently do not have sufficient parking, that they be given an opportunity to be heard. So when we do have a public hearing, let's make sure we invite everybody across the city, and let's get all opinions and views, and let's invite everybody to the table on this. And also, I would just urge not to use the phrase parking as weaponization. And it's because when a developer comes forward, they very little, if any, times have parking in their process. And lastly, on the affordable side, most developers, they don't assign or deed the space to the affordable unit, you know, and they're holding their nose, putting down, you know, the materials that they're putting in the higher, in the market-rate unit. So time has come for us to demand, when developers are building a project and there's an affordable component to it, that not only do the affordable units get the same materials, construction materials in that unit, but they're also afforded or assigned or deeded a parking space so they can get to work and they can have some dignity in that building, as opposed to be, "No, that's the unit, guy around the corner next to the elevator shaft." They don't get parking. That's not fair. And so if we're going to require, we're going to look at all development projects in the city, particularly, obviously, the full affordable. We also need to make sure that if they're not living next to a train station, people need to get to work. Many of them are working two jobs, sometimes three jobs, and having a parking space in their building is vital to being able to take care of the family and to earn an income to sustain themselves. So again, I'm just asking that it not be a one-size-fits-all, we, you know, not use words like weaponization, and that we take each development project in each community and the demands and the needs of the community one at a time, as opposed to a blanket approach. So again, I concur with the previous speaker in terms of her district and the crunch they're feeling. Obviously, Counsel Flynn and I, we're dealing with this on a regular basis as well. Easy for those that have more elbow room and driveways, et cetera, in the southwest corner of the city to opine on this, and I appreciate that perspective, but you come into the North End, you come into Charlestown, you come into Chinatown, total different ballgame. You might as well just shop in your elbows and get your car ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Flaherty. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Alston-Brighton, Counsel Liz Braden. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really applaud the makers for this initiative, but it is a complex issue. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleague from East Boston, and also the issue, I applaud the minimum, get rid of the minimum for 100% affordable units. If that is the obstacle to having a project go forward, then absolutely we need to look at it. But the issue in Alston-Brighton, we have lots of compact living units that are designed to have a minimum parking requirement, but our systems in the city are slightly out of step with these new initiatives, housing initiatives. So the BTD, we say, okay, if we have a no, a reduced parking in a compact living development, then we need to have a requirement that those people don't get a resident parking sticker so that they can park in the street. The whole idea is that you don't have a car, so you don't need to park in the street. But they're slightly out of sync with that. So we don't have a coherent and comprehensive policy across our parking policy that matches the changing housing landscape in our city. So I think, hopefully, that when we have this hearing, that we can maybe broaden the conversation to look at the more complex issues and see if we can advance a comprehensive and coherent and rational approach to parking across the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Braden. Any further discussion? I know we'll go to the sponsor. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from Beacon Hill. Counsel Bach, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to colleagues for the robust discussion. Looking forward to further robust discussion at the hearing. I just want to say a couple of things. One is that I do think it's important to note that this is for 100% affordable developments, and that, you know, I think there is a broader conversation to be had about parking minimums. And it's important also to note that parking minimums are minimums. So, like, people can have parking when you eliminate the parking minimum. It's just that it's part of the community conversation, et cetera, but you're not starting out there at the floor. But also, I just, like, I want to land again on what crisis means. So, like, we've got 50,000 people on the BHA waitlist. So these three projects that are named in this, right, 23 units, 38 units, 202 units, that's 263 affordable units that have been held back just in the past year, specifically on the basis of, and I am going to use the word, Counsel Flaherty, weaponizing the parking minimum as a basis for legal challenge. That is, it's a hook that is being used to block real units of affordable housing. And, I mean, it's sometimes hard to think that we can get there from here in terms of the 50,000 gap, but I'll tell you, we can't get there from here if we let things like this block 263 units. Like, we just cannot. There are two crises that we are nowhere close to meeting at the pace that we need to meet them at. And one of them is affordable housing, and one of them is the climate crisis. And both of them require us having community conversations, yes, faster, about how we move away from an addiction to cars. Like, we're not going to get either of these things done. And I just think that in a more complicated conversation with mixed income, yes, we need to talk about all that, but I think that if we can't start with saying, "Yeah, when there's an opportunity to build a building for 100% low-income people in this city, we are going to take it, and we are not going to leave a hook for people to hang frivolous lawsuits on." I think that's consistent with the action that the state took in the Housing Choice Bill last year, and I think it is absolutely the direction we should be going. So I just want people to know that, you know, I am, I think, generally fairly in favor of how to kind of, you know, how do we work things through, and how do we get to a place that kind of, you know, balances all sides? I just, I don't think that if we can't do this, that we are on the path we need to be as a city. And I just think that also a lot of times in this council, we pass things where we're worried about a hypothetical possible problem. I think that in these three cases, we have, like, a very concrete cost of units and time and money and the opportunity cost of further affordable housing in front of us. And so I just, I just want to underscore the urgency with which I think this specific limited measure should be considered by this council. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bach. Chair now recognizes the District Counsel from South Boston, Counsel Flynn. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to offer a couple of points, and one of them is maybe as part of this discussion having, as part of this discussion, having a BTD inventory of how many parking spots there are in particular neighborhoods. I think that's also part of the solution. And we also have to have an enforcement agency as part of BTD in Boston Police as well, but for out-of-state cars that use our parking spots frequently. And we have to make sure that they are registered here in Boston, registered in the city, get a residential sticker, if that's the case. But we have a lot of out-of-state plates that are in the city. They should be ticketed, and if you don't have a residential sticker in a particular neighborhood, you also should be ticketed as well because you're taking vital parking away from residents that live there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. Any further discussion on this late-file matter? Would any counselors wish to add their name as a co-sponsor? Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Ricardo Arroyo, Counselor Frank Baker, Counselor Liz Braden, Counselor Julia Mejia, Counsel Anissa Saiby George, Counsel Andrea Campbell, thank you, and please, well, you don't need to have the Chair's name. This late-file docket shall be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Now moving right along to the green sheets. Any member wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time? I'm sorry. Brief recess, colleagues? I'm sorry. Yes, Government Operations. Sorry, sorry. All right, we have returned. Sorry, just a technical question. The last late-file matter was, of course, referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Now on the green sheets, seeing no takers to remove anything from the green sheets. We are now move along to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the Clerk that there are zero additions to the consent agenda, so the Chair moves for adoption of the consent agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you. Consent agenda, Counsel Arroyo.
Yes.
Counsel Arroyo, yes. Counsel Baker.
Aye.
Counsel Baker, aye. Counsel Bach.
Yes.
Counsel Bach, yes. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell, yes. Counsel Edwards.
Yes.
Counsel Edwards, yes. Counsel Saiby George.
Yes.
Counsel Saiby George, yes. Counsel Flaherty.
Yes.
Counsel Flaherty, yes. Counsel Flynn.
Yes.
Counsel Flynn, yes. Counselar Mejia.
Yes.
Counselar Mejia, yes. Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley, yes. And Counsel Wu. Mr. President, the consent agenda has been approved.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We're now moving on to announcements. Do any counselors wish to share any announcements with us? The Chair recognizes the District Counsel from Dorchester, Counsel Frank Baker. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to share a little bit of good news about Mass and Cast. Not a whole lot of good news about Mass and Cast, but, and a shout-out to Pine Street. Pine Street had, at the beginning of COVID, they took over, the Roundtree Hotel had 180 homeless people in there. It was a source of contention between neighborhoods and Pine Street. Pine Street made commitments that by July, that they would have all of those people that are in the hotel rooms in housing by June this year. The people that they were, the people that they were dealing with were further or farther, I don't know what the correct English is on that, you probably know, but further along in their process, closer to be able to live on their own. Just the announcement is Pine Street announced just last night, I believe, that all 180 people have gotten into housing and they're going to wrap up their services over there. So a little bit of good news coming out of Mass and Cast.
I think that's a lot of good news. Thank you for sharing that, Counsel Baker, and thank you for your great leadership in[1649.11]